...o'clock, A and I's, 170 Hampton Street.
Uh, 170 Hampton Street is an error. You signed that at the last meeting?
Okay. Got off with one error.
That was easy.
Nope, you actually have 88 Elmwood Street.
Right.
It is a large lot being divided into three smaller lots.
All right, does everything meet the setbacks and the frontages and...
It meets frontages and lot size. Uh, setbacks will be determined when building permits are filed.
Okay, you want to look at that? Jonathan, you want to take a look at that? Wendy? So we had one parcel, it was, uh, thirty-eight thousand feet plus ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy feet, and we made three parcels, two nineteen thousand square foot parcels and one ninety-four thousand, three hundred and seventy.
That's correct.
Okay, and this is on...
It's on Elmwood Street.
Elmwood Street.
And it has frontage on...
Gibson Road?
Yep, High Ridge and Gibson. High Ridge and Gibson, which are both substandard roads, but do provide frontage.
Did you look this over?
Yes.
Did you see any problems with this?
No.
Jonathan, you have any questions on that? Wendy? Paul? Okay, uh... Do we need a motion on this?
No, I mean, it's a, it's an A and R. You can have a motion. It doesn't require, it doesn't require a vote. It's just signatures.
Let's make a motion on this. Let me make a motion to approve the A and R. Hold on, hold on a second. Okay, all in favor? All right, all right. And you want some signatures on this right now? The date is the eighth.
Yes, it is.
Sounds like time off for work.
I've been nonessential with government for eight years. They told me the other day, I'm nonessential. I cry. They give me a number to call every morning. I'm still nonessential.
What's that? This one I've been scrolling along. It worked pretty well.
Don't change them. Uh, when you report it, email or bring in the registered seats office.
All signed up there?
Yep.
All right, let's, uh, let's do the minutes of October.
Should be September twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, uh, not very good. Who was responsible for that one?
I don't think it's...
The agenda was most likely me. I won't claim all of it, but I will claim some of it.
So we're discussing, we're approving the, the minutes from, uh, September...
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, you say? Correct. I'll correct it on screen there. All right, do we have a...
Motion for the minute, second and twenty-fifth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any, uh...
We can take the discussion of seven-thirty and move it up if you would like.
Discussion of five-oh-nine Washington Street, waiver request. One down. One down.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the audience, why don't you state your name and what the, uh, what the waiver's about?
Dana Stoico, Fuller Automotive.
Chris Fuller, Fuller Automotive.
Okay.
Free auto sales, class-two license.
Okay. And... When you understand, well, means I can approve a lot of the use of automotive. Okay, so basically, what you're looking for is to waive the following requirements for site plan review and/or special permit review. Uh, you're looking for waiver for a public hearing, you're looking for a site topography waiver, you're looking for, uh, site lighting, you're looking for a landscape plan waiver, you're looking for a site plan prepared by a professional engineer waiver, you're looking for proposed system of drainage and drainage calculations, and you're looking at some other stuff too, but I don't see what you got here. Let's see.
Just moving into an existing building?
Yes.
You're not modifying it anyway?
No modifications.
No modification.
And what are they presently doing in that building?
They have, uh, in the front area that we would occupy, they have retail tire and alignment under car services. Uh, and then the rest of the building, they operate tire trunk sales and operations, and they've made the decision to forego the retail aspect of the business. Just focus on just the truck.
Do they do, um... Do they do automobile repairs or oil changes in there now?
They do.
Okay.
To what extent, I'm not sure, and I believe that's the reason why they've decided to not allocate any help or anything else to it.
Does everybody on the board know where this is and what it's about?
The one right...
This is, this is Aronson's building, Aronson's Tire Building, and it's right to the right of Fuller's Automotive.
They're just going to put a pad place in the front part of the building. So you're taking us, not, uh, just a small part of the building.
Just the front aspect of the...
Five service paves in the, uh, front waiting area, which is current waiting area for Aronson.
Uh, isn't it a two-story building?
There are offices upstairs, the second floor is.
And how many, uh...
It's not the residential area, no houses.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, uh, no abutters really around that are going to be affected by this. Did you see any issues with this, uh...
None at all. They've been to the zoning board, they've gotten their, uh, for special permit for the automotive repair use. Uh, they're not altering the site in any way, so I, I don't see, I mean, I think historically, the board's taken the position, at least recently, that reoccupation of existing buildings was something they were looking to support. Uh, and that's, I think, why Mr. Fuller's requesting the waiver. So this is the existing site where Fuller's located.
Yeah.
Uh, this is the enterprise rent-a-car, uh, and this is where you'll see those fancy powder-coated rims out on the, uh, display along Route twenty. Uh, I assume those would disappear.
I'm not sure what they plan on doing with them, but it would be...
What, actually, what they plan on doing, if you'd go take your cursor all the way over to the right, where the butts Patrick...
Okay.
In that area right there is where they're going to be, they'd like to locate that.
Advertising?
Yeah.
So you guys essentially were taking from this bump out across and forward?
That's correct.
Jonathan, do you have any questions for Mr. Fuller on this?
Um, this comes to us, Adam, because it's going from one user to two.
Correct, and because they got a special permit, the requirement of the site plan bylaws is any time you receive a special permit or variance or alter a site plan that is existing, you are required to get a site plan. So it's a matter of, of law that they apply for the site plan.
Wendy, do you have any issues or problems with this?
No.
Paul?
No, and we can waive the site plan.
Correct, and that's, that's what the waiver request is for. It's not that you're waiving the site plan, it's that you're granting the site plan approval with a waiver of public hearing and waiver of plan requirements because the building currently exists.
Well, I would move that we accept this.
You're going to make a motion to accept this?
I would say that before the site plan is approved, you would make motions on the waivers, and again, they can be done as a package.
I would like to be, have them done as a package.
Okay, so I would move that we, um, waive the site sopag, topography, site lighting, landscape plan, site plan prepared by a professional engineer, and the proposed system of drainage.
And the public hearings.
No, that comes after.
No, that can be done in the same...
Same time, all right, and the public hearing too.
Second?
Any second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, do we have to make another motion to...
Yeah, then you make a, a motion to approve the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve the site plan?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It is approved. Okay, is it close enough to seven-fifteen to...
It is seven-thirteen.
Seven-thirteen, okay.
Uh, I will give you some additional new business, uh, and he may or may not be here within the next ten minutes or so, but Jeff Bossclaire, the developer of Camden Drive up off of Brook Street, sort of along the Milbury Line, is looking to close out his subdivision. He got a punch list in mid to late August from the DPW. He submitted his final information to the Assistant Town Engineer today. Uh, she sent me a letter stating as such, uh, he was looking for the board to release his tri-party and, uh, report to the Board of Selectmen on, excuse me, layout hearing, uh, which they've scheduled for Tuesday of next week, which would be their next regularly scheduled meeting, and the only meeting that the layout hearing could be held prior to town meeting to meet the seven-day requirement. So he does not have a final letter signing off on the project from the DPW. So my recommendation, and I, I told this to Mr. Bossclaire today when he was in my office, is that we not go ahead with that at this time. Uh, he feels that because the DPW director's on vacation, that he's being punished and that the board should conditionally approve the release. I haven't been able to find anything that says that the board can, I mean, you can obviously conditionally release anything, but I guess my concern is that holding a layout hearing without having a formal release puts the town in some liability going forward. So my recommendation would be to not do that. So I think essentially what would happen is we'd ask the Board of Selectmen to continue their hearing on Tuesday. We would wrap this up potentially at the October twenty-second meeting, because at that time, Mr. Coyle would be back, would have a chance to, if everything is done correctly, do his review and submit his letter, uh, and then at that point, uh, the layout hearing could happen at the Board of Selectmen's next meeting, and the acceptance would have to be in the spring. And that, I don't think would pose a major problem for Mr. Bossclaire because you could release his tri-party. Everything could be said, it's just a matter of town meeting voting. There is the issue of who's responsible for plowing the road, uh, over the winter, but that's an issue I think he and, and the DPW director could sort of work out between the two of them.
What date did he get the punch list?
Uh, it was August eighteenth or nineteenth.
Was it an extensive punch list? Do you know? I didn't, we didn't see it.
Uh, I believe you did. I, it was submitted by Joanna Paake when they said in Town Engineer. I thought that I passed it out at the meeting at the end of August. It was a reasonable punch list. There were some items that apparently had been done that either he had done after submitting the ASBILs or after the inspection. I think the only, there was only one or two what I would consider sort of major issues, and I would think that within the time he was allotted, he should have been able to complete them.
Now, if we didn't take action on this, how long, um, how long would he be held up?
Held up in what way?
Bond release.
He, he would be held up until you...
Spring.
No, you could release the bond. I mean, if, once the DPW director has said, "This meets what was approved, and I'm comfortable with the corrections to the punch list," you can release his bond, and he can be essentially done with the subdivision. The, as I said, the, the main thing would be who's responsible for snow plowing over the winter, and that technically would be him because he's still in ownership of the road. Correct, but having discharged the subdivision, the DPW director may be willing to take over snow plowing because, in theory, outside of time constraints, he could have had it approved at the default special town meeting.
How long is Mr. Coyle going to be on vacation?
He will be back on Tuesday.
Well, I certainly don't want to release a bond to anybody, okay, and get into a situation like we did up on Prospect Street. So, you know something? I think that the position that we should take, if you agree, is to postpone this until the next meeting.
And it may not even be an issue, he may not even show up. He said that he may come and, and look to speak with you.
How do you feel about that?
I'll continue until the next meeting, until it's been inspected, make sure...
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm concerned about, okay?
We have a letter from the DPW director.
Yeah.
Maybe we've had some nasty things.
You want to, let's put this to a, let's put this to a, make a motion on this and that we, that we postpone this till next meeting, and, uh, we'll second it and we'll vote on it.
Until we have a letter from the DPW director.
That's correct, that's correct, yep.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, that's what we're going to do then. We're going to postpone it till the next meeting and until, with conditions that the, uh, we get a signature from the, uh, DPW director, that everything is the way it should be, and then at that point in time, we'll take a... Another vote, okay, now we've got a, uh, hearing for twelve West Tech Drive, site plan application, landscaping, et cetera, Incorporated. All right, we need... We need Larry Broda and Associates.
Yeah, this is Bob Murphy from Robert Murphy and Associates that's with me. Lawrence Broda representing landscaping, et cetera, Incorporated, who, uh, who has an agreement to purchase property at twelve West Tech Drive. Landscaping, et cetera, Incorporated, surprisingly or not surprisingly, is a landscape company. They intend to, uh, put their home-based facility up here. Uh, it is a, uh, the property itself is about a five-point-eight acre parcel. We're here for the site plan review. We've already been to the zoning board of appeals for a use special permit...
I watched it.
Which has been granted. And, um, the, uh, facility will be, this is a regional, fairly fair to describe it as a regional landscape company, and, um, they'll have a ten thousand square foot building, which will be offices and maintenance and some storage. They'll store, they'll store equipment on the site, and they'll have the typical, uh, onsite, they'll have those typical bins, native stone, that have the various...
Yeah.
Items that they utilize. The stor, they'll store it there and take them out and do whatever they do with them at the sites that they maintain. There's a snow storage area. We're going to, we'll have this plan, you have the plan right up here, so you can take a look at it as we follow along. Graves Engineering has done their first review of the plan, and they have produced a comment letter, which has not been, uh, fully responded to at this point in time, correct? And, uh, as you see, the, the site is up at the end of that bulb, the cul-de-sac at the end, the West Tech Drive, takes its frontage off the cul-de-sac and then expands backwards. Next door to it is FedEx, uh, to the south of it is FedEx, and, um, up in the, up in the same area, they have Bartlett Tree and some other places. So that's the site that's going to be developed. You can see from, uh, you go, I'm following along here. You can see where the building is proposed to be.
Show whatever you want, I'm just trying to show what illustrates it.
Yes, okay. Well, you can see where the office portion of the building is, and then in the back, it's maintenance. And, um, the back of the building is higher, and, uh, you know, you go around to the back, you've got a two-story, actually, a two-story building at the back, uh, which you can see through the office portion back into it for whatever the office, the, the operators and the managers want to do, and there's parking provided around the building. And, um, that's it, it's got all the utilities you need. It's a site that hasn't been developed because it's a challenged site. It fits, it fits, it's something that this...
Larry, I, I take it that this is, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with the area and the site, and, uh, I went up there the other day and actually looked at it. West Tech Drive, uh, I think the, the main thing that we're, uh, concerned about is, this is a partial peer review?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is this a partial peer review, or is this the whole peer review, and you've only answered it partially?
That's the initial peer review letter. I don't think that there's been a response issued.
Correct.
Really? Okay. I think in order for us to do anything on any, on any project, okay, and I, I've done it before, it's long enough to know that, um, we, we need answers and, uh, and agreements between the engineering company of plans and the peer review company, okay? Until each and every one of these, and, and, and it's a standard rule with, with me up here, as well as it was with Mr. Brooks, that we go over each and every one of these comments on the, uh, by the peer review, and we ask the engineering company and, uh, what they've done to satisfy each and every one of the comments issued by Graves Engineering or whoever seems to do it, when or whoever does the peer engine, the peer review. And we, we would expect a, um, a comment after each one of these, like, this is five, six, seven, eight, nine. We would expect a comment after this, what has been done to...
You'd like to see our comment back, Graves' response, and whether there's satisfaction or not satisfaction, so you limit the issues you have to...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's fine.
During the process, you've essentially done all the work on the plans, and exactly what you're asking for, we'll be submitting the letter, uh, to the board, showing our response, and then we would get a, a second review from Graves, and basically, they'll, they'll put on it.
I, I honestly think though that, um, I'd love to have you up here as many times you want to come, okay, but, you know, until, until we get what I'm looking for and the board's looking for regarding responses to each one of these questions, not much we can do.
What I'm hearing is you don't want to really begin to get into the substance of this until you have that.
I don't, fair enough, okay?
That's fair enough.
Through the chair, I, I actually have a few questions about the plan.
Sure.
For the engineer and for Mr. Broda. Uh, the storage bins?
Yeah.
They're, the, the modular block bins, they're, you're going to store mulch, loom, stone? Are we looking at salt, fertilizer, anything else?
There'll be a salt area.
Okay, now...
So you want to identify that?
I want that identified. I'd like it covered...
Yeah.
So that rain and whatnot doesn't wash it away.
That is the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, your detention basin doesn't show offense? The board's policy is all detention basins, four-foot-high, vinyl coated chain link with privacy slats?
I can't write that down.
Essentially, the subdivision regulations cover the requirement for detention basins.
You mean to tell me Mr. Graves, after looking at this project, didn't come up with, uh, those as part of his peer review?
I did not see questions about the use of the storage bins because it's not a general engineering, uh, review. That's a, a use review, and that's something that generally the, the board would bring in?
Because at the ZBA, all those questions were asked.
Correct, and they, and...
And they, and they stated that there was definitely going to be salt stored there.
And they are, the purview of the planning, that's the pur, the purview of the planning board is part of the, this review?
Well, I would expect, uh, I would expect in Mr. Graves' finished, uh, peer review that that, that's definitely addressed.
I will, I will pass that on to Mr. Walsh. And the...
Final question I had, is this rear storage yard area is sort of undefined? I imagine that some of it is going to be area for movement to access the bins, and some of it is going to be equipment storage. From my perspective, I think that that needs to be formalized so that we can identify the ability to access that in the event of an emergency, after hours, or, you know, if you're going to gate the rear area, or, you know, if there were a fire in the mulch in, on a hot August night, and there's just equipment packed in there, the fire department's going to be, you know, sort of hamstrung to get back in there.
Okay.
And again, that's more of a, a use thing. It meets all of the access requirements from what I can see. But, and the landscaping is awfully sparse for a landscaping company. Uh, and clearly not in conformance with Section eleven of the bylaws.
Yes, we, that was one of the things we...
And, and I know that that's in Jeff's letter, but I'm going to reiterate that, that the town took a position that we'd like to, you know, aesthetically dress our commercial areas.
Right. Um, we're going to address that, the maybe request for a waiver on some of what you have.
And, and that, that's acceptable. I just think that there's two street trees currently there, and beyond that, I see maybe eight bushes.
Yeah, no, the owner, the owner, Mr. Christie, is having a new landscape plan done. It would, it would be, given what you have on that, uh, area... In this area here, there's a lot of, uh, low-growth trees.
Sure.
There are a lot of growth, low-growth trees, which really creates what you get from your...
And that's...
But he's going to beef up all this area over here.
Sure, and I guess it's really just a matter of showing what may exist that he's looking to keep, and it ju, it seems like a, a little bit sparse.
Yeah.
Uh, and on the lighting plan, um, it appears that you're meeting the requirements, but I don't know where the property lines are.
Yeah.
This is just showing the parking lot lines.
Yeah.
That's a simple, you know, just turning the layer on so we can identify where the property line is so that we're ensuring that there's actually zero at that property line.
Correct, okay. You're not worried about FedEx.
Each, uh...
Not terribly, but...
Adam, each one of these comments that you're making, okay, um, should be set forth in Graves' peer review so that, so that we have a formal answer.
I will, I will write a memo. I did the, I did my review and made my...
I will, I will write a memo. I did, I did my review and made my notes at the end of last week and I hadn't sat down and typed out any memo yet.
Our response letter to Graves will also include this information as well as some of the information that was discussed in the, with the zoning board. One point I could bring out is the, they were pretty adamant about not only covering a salt area but containing it. So, and, and Mr. Christie explained and I'm still waiting, I'm waiting for a detail from that. But it's basically a containment vessel. The salt can't get out on the pavement.
Yeah, he was worried about discharge.
Yeah.
Which I would be, which I would be worried about too. But again, that all should be taken care of in, in that peer review.
We hear you.
There was a question brought up by Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineers as to the fence detail. We show the fence detail in the detail sheets, but we didn't show where the fence was going. So indirectly, he approached that subject. So we're.
So that was a detention pond fence?
It was a combination. It was, it was a fence for the detention pond and we've since, although you don't have it on your plan, we've since added a security gate to the front and also a fence around the dumpster, the dumpster pad.
Any security gating should have a Knox box with a key for the fire department.
As, as you earlier mentioned, a hot August night, make sure the box is there.
Yeah, I mean, they have the key on the truck and it's quite a process to get it out. So I don't think we're gonna have to worry about the fire department hauling mulch out of there.
No. We know what you want.
What is your turnaround time looking like on the plans?
We have all the changes made, actually made on the plan. We just didn't get a chance to write the letter. So our, we anticipate that the letter with a revised set of plans will go to Graves. Probably, I'd say no later than a week from today.
So we could continue this hearing to, you're gonna need time for Graves to do it. Do you wanna go for the next meeting or the meeting after that?
Well, if he's, if Mr. Murphy's talking about not getting the letter to Graves for a week.
Then we're gonna go.
That would, I mean, that would give Jeff about three days to, to turn, to turn a letter around.
When is your next meeting? In two weeks?
Twenty-second, yes.
Two weeks, yeah.
And then the following meeting would be November 12th.
Doesn't matter to me, Larry, whatever, whatever.
Why don't we schedule, why don't we schedule for the next and if, if it, if it becomes a physical impossibility, we can.
You can notify Adam and we can, yeah, we'll move it up for you. We'd be glad, we'd be glad to work with you. Okay? I don't have a problem.
Appreciate that.
We'll get the letter out soon too.
Okay.
Seven thirty? Cause we have, we have a seven o'clock already.
Okay, seven thirty on the twenty-second.
Be at least a half hour.
And I'll talk to you a week ahead of time anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Okay, where this is a hearing, we'll, we'll take, we'll make a motion to, we'll make a motion to move this up to the twenty-second. At seven what?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, all right. Wanna do that?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to October 22nd at seven thirty.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Hopefully the Red Sox will be there soon. Evening of entertainment.
Not Santos.
No. Thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman, I see that Mr. Jeff Bossclaire has showed up about the subdivision we briefly spoke about earlier. I don't know if he would like to address the board if the board will hear him.
Okay, this is in regards to.
Camden Drive.
Camden Drive. Yeah, Mr. Boysclaire, come on up here.
Hello all. Excuse me, I got my truck right outside. I have to work on the mast pike. This is where I leave here, Paul Lynch.
Ready to do some plowing?
No, not yet. Actually, they're doing the pike over, I guess, all through Auburn.
Yeah, we get complaints about jackhammering all the time.
What would you like to? Well, I think Adam, he just mentioned that.
We had a brief discussion about where you're at and what's going on.
All right. Well, basically back in June, I gave Adam what would be the ASBIL plans. It was then on August 19th that the town engineers, I say the town engineers because of the way the letter was written as the engineering department had reviewed. And not only did they just review it, but they compared my subdivision plans with the ASBIL plans. And that's how they generated this punch list. And the punch list, we started, everything was just about complete by September 17th. And it was on that date that Bill Coyle had walked through with me and he'd come up with a couple of the things that basically weren't finished and mainly the icing on the road. When he was out there, I was having a company come and try to repair the road section so water would go into a catch basin rather than cross the road. Bill was right there at the time and he basically said it wasn't gonna work. And I agreed with him. It was at that point that him and I decided we'll hire an engineer to regrade or re-topo the road and do the whole road over, just on that section with the two catch basins. So I did that. And that same day, Bill had spoke with Adam on the phone and the two of them said at least six times that my drop dead deadline would be the fourth of October. I said, okay, Bill, you know, I'll have it done. And October 3rd, I called Bill and he says, okay, I'm going on vacation, just talk to Joanna. So I did that and apparently Joanna doesn't have any paperwork. Didn't talk to Bill about this. Didn't talk to Adam about it. So I'm in a position now where I guess I can't make the layout hearing.
Well, the layout hearing, correct.
So all the items are completed according to the punch list that they provided. And I'm just looking, I'm not looking for, I talked with Adam about this. I guess I'm not looking for, for everyone to say yes, let's approve it without Bill Coyle. But just hopefully we can do something so I can get on that, the layout hearing, which is a week from today. Right?
Correct.
I just don't, I don't know what to do.
You contacted Joanna yesterday.
Yeah, it might have been, yeah, it might have been yesterday.
So, I mean, and even if, you know, you called Bill on, you contacted her yesterday that and she didn't receive the documents until today.
Right. The only thing that was changed on the ASBIL plan, again, looking at the punch list that she provided, was just a matter of placing the sewer stops that I have onsite and that, that was the only difference.
Your basic reason that you're here from us is you want the okay to have the bonds released so you get your money back, right? Is that what you, is that basically why you're, why you're here?
If, if we had time and Bill Coyle was around, yes, I would do that. But since he's not here, I know that's, that's an impossible thing to do. So.
Well, what, what can we, what do we have the authority to do to help you? What do you, what do you need, what do you need from us? We already discussed this when you weren't here. We had a discussion because you had a hearing at a certain time here and you weren't here.
No, he didn't have a hearing. He came in under new business.
Oh, okay.
This was, we discussed it, what you and I discussed today about what, you know, going to the layout hearing and having the bond not relea, the tri-party not released. I think what Mr. Bossclaire is looking for is as part of the layout hearing, the planning board is required to submit a report to the board of selectmen. Without that report, the board of selectmen generally will not conduct the layout hearing. Often, that report is the planning board has approved this subdivision through the construction process and review, we've determined that it was built per the plans that were approved by the board and we see no problem with this being laid out.
We can't do that. And the reason we can't do that is we don't have the, we, we don't have a report by the reporting authority to us that everything's been done. You know? I mean, if there's, if there was, Adam, is there some way that, that, that we can make this happen without Bill Coyle?
I think that if all of the information had been submitted before today, there's a possibility that it could have been done. I have a different recollection of the conversation I had with Bill. Bill indicated to me he was going on vacation. We said that the third seemed like a more reasonable date. I, I wasn't onsite, so I don't know what was conveyed to Mr. Bossclaire. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that he's stating inaccuracies because again, I wasn't there. My understanding was that it was gonna be the third for him to notify the DPW.
So in other words, so he's caught between a rock and a hard place now because he can't go before the layout committee to, to start this process?
He isn't. It's, it's not that simple, I guess. He's not caught between a rock and a hard place because the board can still, at its next meeting, excuse me, go forward with releasing the tri-party on the 22nd. If the engineering department, the DPW, has said that the items are completed per their requirement. He would not be able to have the layout hearing on the 15th based on the timing that we have now, which means he would not be able to have the road accepted by town meeting on October 29th. That.
What is that gonna do as far as holding up the return of the bond money? If I may?
What?
Let me, let me handle this first.
What it will do is it continues to put the responsibility of plowing on Mr. Bossclaire through the winter. Because he is still the technical owner of the road. Because the town meeting has not accepted it.
Well, do you have a problem with plowing it this winter?
Well, you'd see the, just if I could.
It sounds like you do.
That's only, see, even the bond, I'm not worried about that at all. Cause I know I can wait two weeks or maybe another month. So the bond is no problem. And even the town accepting the road, it really isn't, it is the plowing. Because although I do live there, what happens is if I don't plow when it's like two inches or three inches, the people who do live there, they call the town. Then the town calls me and it just goes back and forth. And not to mention, I guess, what would be the liability aspect of it.
We had no, you, you gotta understand something. This is basically a first time for us on this. We, we had no clue that this was going on. We didn't know that there was a delay with your paperwork and with Mr. Coyle going on vacation. I didn't have any privy to that. Did you? Did you know about that? Did you?
I don't know.
This is the first time that we're, we're running into this right now and I wish I knew what I could do to help you.
Right, understandable. So is there any, like, I, I said to Adam, I know you can't do like a contingent upon. But I don't know, is there something like, okay, approve, I don't know if you can even say approve it.
I would like to, I would like to set this up for the next meeting, okay, which is in two weeks. And by that time, I'll have, I'll have a lot more information on this.
Right.
And, and at the next meeting, I don't see, if, if we hear from the DPW director or his assistant, I would be glad to approve the release of the bond and I'm sure the other people on the board would too. The problem is, I don't know how that's going to alleviate you from the plowing situation for this coming winter without going through that layout committee and, and having the road accepted. I don't know what's gonna, I, I don't know how, I, I can't help you on that. I don't, none of us can.
Yeah. Well, you know, it was a shot. You know, I just thought, you know, if there was any.
The only people that can help you on that is you could talk to the board of selectmen, some of the members in board of selectmen and you could discuss it with Bill Coyle and see if there's anything he can do to work it out with the board of selectmen so that, so this'll take place. Again, I don't know the procedures on this layout committee enough so that, so that I can help you.
The layout, it's the board, the board of selectmen is who is responsible for holding the layout hearing. They essentially say that the road that is constructed is laid out in the manner shown in the subdivision and is acceptable to move forward for town meeting to accept. By way of history, this delay, well, the plans came into my office at the end of June. In July, this board voted to request a final inspection from Mr. Coyle. The request was made. He generated a letter out of his office, again, as Jeff said, on August 19th. And then Jeff began working on completing the punch list items. Apparently, there was a second site visit on September 17th. And so it's not a, necessarily a delay. There was maybe three or four weeks between the request being made for the inspection and the inspection actually happening. And that, some of that has to do with the DPW being busy during the summer and having projects that they're working on that were being put together. I, I can't speak for what that delay was. So this is the normal way that subdivisions are closed out. The request is made by the board. The engineering department works with the developer to finalize and then they come back through the board.
Do you realize, do you realize that if you didn't get all these, all this paperwork in and everything done by a certain time, that you would be responsible to take care of that road for the entire winter until, until next year?
Yes.
You did?
I did. And the, the major concern that Bill had was the icing on the road. And for me, I did the road twice over, as I mentioned earlier. And Bill knew it was a short period of time to get even a contract out there to do it. And that's why I needed that drop dead date. Now, if I can, let, mention one more thing and I'll let you guys go.
Sure.
The last subdivision I did in Auburn, they held back what would be a percentage of the bond, even though they accepted the road and all for a period of time. Is that, is that still?
When was that done?
That was back in like oh two, 2001, 2002.
What subdivision was that?
Chestnut Place.
And they ended up giving it back to you eventually?
Oh, yeah, after, because you know, if you plant trees, they wanna make sure that within a year that they don't die. And things like that. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if, if, how much bond money have you got waiting to come back to you?
Oh, for me, it's only like $20,000.
Okay.
Well, but it's a, it's a tri-party agreement. So there's a, there's a holdback of, and I don't have the number in front of me. I think it's in the high two, low 300.
Oh, it's like 320,000. So whenever I sell a house lot, the bank will keep the money.
It, what it is, it's a, it's a holdback on a mortgage. So the tri-party is essentially, Mr. Bossclaire has a mortgage with the bank. And in that mortgage, we required him to take out an additional $320,000 that the bank keeps in a secret kitty. So if we decide that he hasn't done something or he walks away, we go to the bank and say, we're gonna sue you and you're gonna give us that money. And they generally go, here. And then they take it out on him. The release of the tri-party essentially says that the bank can capture that money back into repayment of the loan. So there isn't necessarily a financial incentive directly to Mr. Bossclaire, but there's a long-term financial incentive on the cost of the note. So it's essentially a bulk payment back on his note.
So it seems to, I mean, what we're waiting on is essentially semantics at this point. We're waiting on a favorable review from Bill Coyle so that we can make, essentially, we 99% of the time follow the recommendation for DPW. so that we can make, essentially, we ninety-nine percent of the time follow the recommendations from DPW. So we're really waiting on that letter
Correct.
to get, so that we can make a formal approval. There's no way, as you mentioned before, to do a condition, uh, approval contingent upon a favorable letter received by, from DPW that accom- accompanies our report. Um, that gets him through kind of the...
I, I, I mean, you can do anything that you want. I don't think it's technically illegal. It leaves me with some concerns on liability, uh, or ti-, you know, if the board approves the layout, which, which tex-, which technically won't change, uh, but if he's unable to complete it prior to town meeting, it's still on the warrant, although the board is the petitioner, so the board could withdraw it anytime that they wanted.
Right, and we still have the bond, which would be released at a separate, at a later time, right? So we still have that security.
But the town can't accept the road until the bond has been released. But technically, you, I guess you meet a week before town meeting. It gives me pause because it's, like Paul said, sets precedent, and...
What's the precedent, though? Everything's been, you'll know everything's been completed before the layout hearing.
But we won't because there's no guarantee that Bill will come back on Monday and not have something blow up in his face and not have the chance to go and do an inspection.
But if he does, the letter doesn't accompany our report, so therefore, kind of...
I see, so you're saying the letter to the, the selectman prior to the layout hearing?
Yeah.
If we could condition...
So that our report to the layout...
If we could condition it...
So, so the report to the layout, to, for the layout hearing would say the planning board has outstanding items as enumerated in the punch list dated October nineteenth. If a letter is submitted by the DPW director discharging these items, the board recommends that the Board of Selectmen accept the layout as, as shown, something to that.
Yeah, and if, if Bill Coyle comes back and he reviews it and items aren't done, then the letter doesn't accompany it and essentially invalidates the approval we gave and where, where we started. Um, if not, you know, he's not penalized for Bill being on vacation. And, I mean, to have to plow that road for the course of the winter again is pretty substantial cost, so if there's a way we can...
Do you see any other?
I, I, I don't like releasing unless we have Bill Coyle's report.
Well, I don't think he's, I don't think that John is suggesting that we release the tri-party. I think he's suggesting that we send a favorable report only if it's accompanied by a letter from the DPW director. And then on the twenty-second, it would still be a matter of the board looking formally vote to release the tri-party and signing the legal release at that point. You're kinda doing it backwards.
Well, we're deferring our approval to Bill Coyle, who's gonna make it anyways. And if Bill comes back and says he doesn't like it, or if Bill can't do it in time, are, we're not approving anything.
Did, um, after you issued that punch list, all right, by Bill Coyle, did Bill Coyle ever come back up there again and say, "Okay, you've got everything done, but..."
Yes.
He did?
Yes. And that's what I mentioned, on September seventeenth, that's when he did a walkthrough.
And he had no issues except the one, right?
Right, which was the icing of the road.
Of the road, right? And at that particular point in time, you did get an, you did get a, a company up there to take care of that.
Yes, uh, uh, at first, though, I had to hire an engineer to re, um, what's another word? I guess, uh, to re-engineer the road? So the grade would change, right, with my color, after, you can see at the bottom of the color stack.
So Paul, here, so here's, here's the story on this, okay? So, he, he gets issued a punch list by Bill Coyle, okay? That there's ten or twelve items left to do before Coyle will approve this, this project. And Coyle comes back up to him and says, "All right, it looks like you're all set except for the grade of the road in one area. So, we only have a, we have a one-twelfth negative situation there." Then, he has an engineering company, which, again, hasn't been reinspected, but he has an engineering company correct that one-twelfth error in the punch list. So now, according to Mr. Bosclaire, he has a, he has a, uh, a punch list that's been completed, and he's in the lost and found. We have Mr. Coyle on vacation, so he can't, he can't go up and inspect this last, this last, um, part of the punch list. So at that particular point in time, you know, 'cause we, we really, this is, this gets deep, all right? Something we're not used to going into is the, is the financial and, and, uh, and, uh, finishing layout reports and stuff like that. We usually don't get involved in that. But, um, I think Jonathan might have, uh, might have a good idea as far as conditioning a letter to the, uh, Board of Selectmen stating that, uh, that, you know, "We're all set to go on this, but," one of the conditions being that he has a letter of release from the DPW stating that the entire punch list has been completed and he's happy with it. Now, if, a- a- and I agree with Jonathan again on this particular aspect that, uh, if by any chance Mr. Coyle says, um, gee, I'm really not too happy with Bosclaire, okay, because of this reason or that reason, then the letter becomes null and void because of the condition. In the meantime, he may not have to plow the road all winter if, if we, if we do this. So, with that, does that, does that sound about the way you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, if, we're essentially gonna follow the review of Bill, whether it's favorable or not favorable.
I mean, I hope we don't run into this situation again, okay? I, I don't, I feel uncomfortable with this situation, all right? But, you know something, it's something that's in front of us, and I, I just think that, uh, I just think that, uh, something, uh, something should be done on it.
Well, myself, as, once again, I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I feel that...
What do you feel wrong with that, though?
It's, it's setting a precedent. In other words, we should be the final, uh, say on whether Mr. Coyle's, uh, report is complete or not. All right, if we defer it to Mr. Coyle, then Mr. Coyle is making the decision. All right, we're not making the decision. And I think that's our responsibility.
Well, ninety percent of the time I'd agree with you, but this particular time I don't. And the reason I don't is because, uh, again, uh, and again, I hope this doesn't come up before us again, but, but, uh, needless to say, it's something that we've got to address. I don't think that Mr. Coyle, i- i- this all has to do with Mr. Bosclaire being able to present this before the Board of Selectmen at a layout meeting, okay? This really doesn't have anything to do with anything but that. And without the letter coming from us that, uh, that we'd go along with this if Mr. Coyle appro-, Mr. Coyle approves the project, they're not gonna listen to him at that layout meeting because he doesn't have the, he doesn't have the letter.
Right, but they can hold another layout meeting. The big problem is not the layout meeting.
No, they can't. The reason they can't, and, and the reason I'm going along with this is because it, it won't be in time to get, it won't be in time to get in front of the town meeting.
Right.
So, now he's gotta wait...
Till next spring.
Till next spring before he goes in front of the town meeting.
Yep. When it comes before us a town meeting, then we can approve it.
But I think we still have another opportunity.
Correct.
To weigh on this, because we're still in the next, in our next meeting in two weeks.
On October twenty-second, you still have the opportunity to release the tri-party, which puts him free and clear to have it accepted
Right.
as long as the layout hearing has been held on the fifteenth.
And I'd, I'd just like to make the point, too, that I don't think we're deferring to Bill Coyle. What we're saying is, is, is as long as he gives, you know, says that it has met all of the criteria, you know, then we're giving out approval. So we're not deferring to Bill, Bill Coyle.
I like to see that before I approve.
Well, we've got till the next meeting, right?
You have, the next, no, because if he, the Board of Selectmen meets on the fifteenth, and then they meet before town meeting. The layout hearing needs to be held seven days prior to town meeting. So they won't be meeting seven days prior to town meeting. They'll only be meeting the fourteen days prior. So you'll have the twenty-second with which to release the tri-party. And I don't think that there's anybody tonight suggesting the tri-party should be released. But if he doesn't, if the layout hearing isn't conducted on Tuesday, he will not have a road accepted.
At this town meeting.
At this town meeting, correct.
It'll come before the next town meeting.
Well, I'm, I'll make the motion that, we can vote on it for the rest.
That's...
Make the motion that we...
Your prerogative.
Make the approval contingent upon the terms that we just discussed a minute ago.
The recommendation to the, or the report to the Board of Selectmen for the layout hearing.
And also to the planning board.
Conditioned upon, yeah.
The letter from Bill Coyle to the planning board stating that it meets all the criteria.
Yeah, yeah, that would be the criteria that...
So in other words, Paul, if we don't go along with this, okay? In other words, it, well, first of all, we're not putting, we're not giving up anything by, by doing this.
Second.
Yeah.
So we're, we've made a motion to make the letter, and we've seconded it.
And not further discussion.
And it, and we, any further discussion? And you're still against it? Okay. Okay, so, we're gonna vote. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to one. We make the letter.
No, thank you. So, yeah, um, again, it was nothing to do, it's nothing to do with the money. It's just a matter of the, you know...
The plowing all, all winter.
Yeah, yeah. And see, what, what...
You know something, though, this is what, this, this is a, you know, just, this is off the record now, of course, but, uh...
It's not off the record.
Oh, all right. Well, I gotta be honest with you, have a nice day.
And Jeff quite...
Can't be off the record, 'cause I wanna listen.
Jeff, quite honestly, it is about the, the money because the money has to be released prior to town meeting. So, we'll expect to see you at, at seven forty-five on the twenty-second to release that tri-party pending...
Pending everything else being done, right?
Because it's not done, we're just allowing you the path to get it done.
To get it done soon, of the plow the road all winter.
Yeah. And now, I don't know, are we still off the rec-, are we on the record?
We, the meeting is still open.
Everything you say is being recorded.
All right. I've been plowing the road for six years. So I'll just say, you know, and it's just, at two o'clock in the morning, three, four, I get phone calls and it's just, it's hard on me.
You know, this is what it, this is what it is when you're an entrepreneur.
I only knew, you know, hindsight, you know? But, all right, thank you much.
Thank you.
I'll see you, uh, soon.
Twenty-second at seven forty-five.
And do I get a note from you, will I get a note from you of any kind? Or do I, uh...
Just from teacher.
All right.
No, it, it'll get sent directly to the Board of Selectmen.
All right.
If you want a copy after I send it.
All right, just get that date one more time, October...
The layout hearing is October fifteenth, you don't have to be here for that. October twenty-second is the board's meeting, you do have to be here for that.
All right. All right, very good, uh, thank you for your time.
Okay, have a good night.
And two seventy-five Washington Street has asked to continue until the twenty-second. Uh, they are looking at altering the scope of their request.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion if they...
It's a discussion, so...
It's a discussion?
It's more just, don't throw their stuff away. My, my guess is you'll get more of it, but they may decide they wanna go with what they originally proposed.
I don't know, the building, the building looks pretty nice.
They just bought the building. Their original proposal is to rip out the pavement in front and put in a walkway and some plantings.
Yeah, that, that looks nice.
But they're, they're deciding whether or not they have the funds to invest in that at this time or if they wanna scale the scope back a, a small bit.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, have a motion.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
See you later.